Okay, being seven o'clock, I'm at the January twenty first, twenty twenty-one. The American Board of Selectmen made it to the tour. All three selectmen are present. Town administrator present, road agents on his way in the door now. And Leo Martell is recording for the public. And Linda Nickerson will upload those to the town website into YouTube. Okay, I've got some old business with the January fourteenth meeting minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the January fourteenth amendment?
Okay.
I'll second that. Bob's made the motion, Mike is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I'll make a follow-up motion to approve the non-public minutes of January fourteenth as written.
Second.
Okay, motions are made by Mike, seconded by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Are we, uh, are we sealing the?
No, there's nothing, there's only a paper.
Alright, so those are done. I don't want to public comment, Leo, you got anything first?
Uh-huh.
Okay, no public comment at this time. So going on to town business, uh, Mike, why don't you make a motion on this RSA?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, program number three, something like that, B, to accept the un- unanticipated revenue from fundraising to the purchase of the cemetery, to purchase a cemetery event for the grave of Dave Dalton, involved in one thousand dollars.
Motion seconded. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm just saying, it's my money, so. Alright. Motion passes. Lee, you have that check, right?
Thank you. For your bank.
Marty Bank, alright. Okay, Jeff, town is up for some more discussion.
I made a decision tonight. Interesting, right? Thanks for hearing me first.
Yeah.
Uh, I was curious about, uh, the last time we talked budget issues. We touched upon that, perhaps a bond, and it was a little undecided what direction we were gonna go.
Uh-huh.
I was gonna kinda knock it around, and I was just wondering if we were thinking we were gonna put it off another year, or, or, or what your feeling was for?
Well, let me tell you, we did have a little discussion, Jeff, in the meeting you weren't at a couple weeks back.
Yeah.
I think you were, last week, and, uh, Bob brought up that the bond rates are real low at this time, I think they're about two percent.
Yeah, Lee didn't give me a sheet, and what, they were pretty attractive, our were pretty attractive.
Our thought was to, um, take a breather from this year and not try and do a bond on the agenda with, uh, what we're doing at the town meeting, to try and keep, uh, you know, very limited amount of people coming there because we don't have a crowd.
Yeah, it makes sense with the COVID issues.
Being the first year of the bond for the roads until people get used to it, I think there might be a lot of discussion that first year.
Yeah, well, maybe by then we can get a, our eye can get a better package together, and we can have maybe a little more discussion, instead of just getting ready for warrant, putting on, you know, the two weeks, and then have to have a big discussion.
That's what I was hoping.
But I mean, it's not, it's not something, it's totally out of the realm of possibilities.
No, I think next year would be a great year to start it, but I'd like to do a slideshow projection, so we can put it up there, show the roads that we might be talking about with a map on there, and, uh, show them, uh, the amount of money that you're gonna spend on those roads.
Slideshows. Somebody's gonna have to hold my hand.
The thing is, I think it's, uh, good to educate the, the public, get them to get buy it.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And maybe we could get a little input throughout this coming summer or something.
The thing is, we can.
If we have a road hearing, we can touch upon it a little bit then. Mike's actually suggested that to me.
Just introduce it, so it's not, not something you do at the last minute, that's something we're planning for.
That's fine, I just. In that way there, I think if we can develop that through this next year.
Yeah.
And get the process in place, and have a little slideshow, and maybe try that out a week or two before the town meeting.
Yeah.
And then go there and, uh, you know, the selectmen will have the backing.
I think you convinced us, we just gotta convince the public.
Well, the other thing is, everything's still up in the air with the COVID issues, I mean, it's, you know, you don't know what kind of town meeting you're really gonna be able to have until, I guess, so hopefully we can pull something off that's reasonable.
Yeah, so our thought is, if we can hold that off, Jeff, and do it next year, do the proper planning for it.
Yeah.
Um, and we can also show the public that, you know, you can get roads done in a much quicker period of time.
Yes.
And the payment will basically be the same as what we're already setting aside.
I, I started with the numbers a little bit, and, yeah, for that hundred thousand we're putting toward paving anyway, that would either, if it didn't cover the bond, it would come close to it. That's just quick math, just playing around, not really.
And the only risk, which we're taking a risk on, and Bob pointed this out, interest rates alone now.
Yeah.
So we're gonna miss the opportunity now, but no one knows which way they're gonna go, flat, down further, or up. But even if it goes up, it's not gonna go crazy when you.
Loans are always fairly low, so I think it'd be a good alternative.
And if something happens and the interest rates go up that much, it might not be a good time to do it anyway. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that could, it could be a lot of other factors that are costing the town issues. So, well, I'm comfortable with that, as long as we had some dialogue, talked about it, and we developed some kind of plan.
Yeah, I'd like to develop this plan like I talked with these guys about, through roads, you know, making sure. We go to those ones first, and then if we do a second bond at later time, do, you know, a bunch of the smaller roads.
One bonded.
Yeah.
Well, that would be my theory, would be to do some of the major roads that we can't wait ten years to do, or we're gonna totally lose them, and then we can still keep pecking away at smaller short roads, rebuilding those, because there's a couple that really need that to be done. And that's where. My, my plan is somewhat receptive, I mean, you guys seem all on board, except for timing is a problem.
Right. Alright, that's good, I'm good with that.
We did kinda, and I don't know where, how you, if you can, if you made a decision or not, but we did, you did allude, not you, but the board did, uh, allude to the fact that, uh, they might see how where all the budget numbers came in, might beat that hundred thousand up a little, or have you put any thought on that, or?
We're doing that tonight, but I don't think the hundred thousand, I don't think we had to beat yours up too much.
Well, I know he's, he wants to.
It's an increase.
He wants, he's putting his hands out, we'll, we'll increase that number a little bit. And what's some discussion about it, and, and it was all relative to how the rest of the budget.
Well, John, I know John came back to us, and the bodies ended up being.
Yes.
So we increased that by twenty already.
Yeah, he's got no choice, he goes.
So we'll kinda increase that one, so I guess we look at the, the bottom line total, see where we end up.
Yeah, that's fine, 'cause we, I mean, I, and I agree to it, don't get me wrong, I'm not arguing about it, or complaining about the capital improvement package, instead of putting as much away as we had the twenty-five, and it's all down fifteen in turn, because we're in a good situation.
Fine, that's fine, I guess, why I ask, um, while you're here, we've got something else coming up on our agenda later tonight. Uh, we've got a letter from attorney in reference to the discontinued portion of Route thirteen.
Yes.
And, um, I've read through it pretty thoroughly this week, I know Bob had read it last week, and I think Mike reviewed it. Um, we're probably not gonna make any decisions on this tonight, but do you plow any of that section that goes down by that house, or do you just go right behind that house?
Go right behind that house.
Okay.
Do you make a turn at all?
Not now.
So they plow it as their ground wing right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I believe it goes about even with the house.
Yeah, the back side of the house.
The back house was, when Andy Michaels lived there, he explained it all, doing the shovel and all the paperwork, and I had copies and all this stuff, because he pursued that quite a bit, and, uh, we used to sometimes plow it, but his son Frank had a snowplow, and he had a snowplow, and a lot of times, timing-wise, it wouldn't work for him, so they'd just plow it anyway. Occasionally, we kept some sand out, it wasn't on our regular route to do, but it got done. And since the changing of the guard there, they're pretty self-sufficient, so we just stay.
I wanted to just add to that, because I think it'll come up on our agenda here later, and, uh, we've got some feedback from the attorney, and it looks like the same feedback you're telling us, which is what a previous, two thousand and two, Board of Selectmen decided that it was, the town road to the backside of that house.
Yeah, some, some point, I remember Andy had showed me a couple times when he was alive, and had the documentation backed up, so.
You still have copies of the documentation?
Excuse me?
Do you have copies of the documentation with that?
Yes.
Could, lean to the pocket for us.
Yeah, I, you may already have it, I, you may be having it new, but I'll bring it in so you can.
Just to make sure we have.
Yeah.
Document.
It's nothing earth, earth-shattering, it's just some information.
The other party just, I, we received a large fabric from one attorney, the other party just sent a, sent a letter saying she was representing the other one, and that she wanted to be left.
Well, I'll bring in what I've got, and I've picked up all the years on Holmes Road, I think they have copies of it, whatever.
Would you, would you with whatever, from the next statement, how he maintains, what does help, and he never mentioned.
He just did.
Okay. It's a, it's just a, it's, it's a, I wanna nip this early.
Yes.
Um, okay, I think that's all I had for you, Jeff, you got anything else for the board?
Yes, um, did you?
It's in the document.
I'm correcting the amount of pay.
Paying?
Oh. Yes.
Nope, we're talking.
There are two different things, so we're two, the.
The amount of pay thing is not, not, not that.
No, it's, it's just a correctional effort. Well, uh, well, the paving contractor that we've, has been doing paving, base paving, excavating, sent a proposal in, um, it's, we would, we up with, uh, paving next year, basically, the numbers are the same as they were.
It's amazing he's able to do that, you know, market's going up and down, and he's concerned.
Yeah, but I mean, we're a good customer for them, and we have a decent relationship, I feel. They're a full-service company, they offer, and, and that, they like working here logistically, it's good for them for their shop and hooks it, and getting the asphalt, and, uh, so I would like to continue another year with them.
Okay, well, let me make a motion, then, if the board have any more discussion, the rates are the same as they've been the last three years, it looks like. Um, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from advanced paving and excavating for the twenty twenty-one paving prices. Machine pave at sixty-eight fifty, handwork pave at one twenty-five a ton, reclaim and fine grade at one fifty a square yard, and flaggers at thirty-five dollars an hour for the year twenty twenty-one, uh, for advanced paving and excavation out of Suncoast, New Hampshire. Motion been made?
I'll second that.
I think it's last year's two, Bob, it's the same exact number I keep. I'll give you a pen, Bob.
Yeah. Jeff, how long have we been with this company?
Uh, I bet you we've.
I have three years worth of it.
I was gonna say, I bet he's ten plus years.
Okay.
It could be, it could be twelve, we re, we bid it every so often.
Right, that's what I was asking.
And they still, every time they come here.
Okay.
Lower.
Yeah. Okay, so a motion. You're, you're happy with the performance?
Yes, the thing is, we're a small fish, you know, compared to all the, of, all the towns and cities and stuff. And they get busy, but he's receptive to our small town needs and takes good care of us. There also is a couple things that he didn't put on there, but when we need a, a dirt compactor for when we do road construction stuff, he has several, and he, we usually rent one for him.
Okay.
Kind of a, a reduced rate, it isn't like going to the rental company, you know, it's usually a nominal fee, he delivers it, picks it up and everything for a package deal. Because the roller is a type of machine that you, you only use it a few hours, you do some compacting, then you do some more prep, and then you do some more compacting. So it sits around a lot, and he's got several of them, and he's very accommodating that way.
Good to hear.
So, I mean, he, it's a little more than just everything he does with the paving, paving's attractive prices, they do, they have all the gear to work with. It's all, you know, subcontract.
My, my only concern is, it, to me, it sounds great.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, from a legal standpoint, we do anything by the book, as far as these little contracts, should we get some bids in, for the, in the future?
Yeah.
And so just so we're, just so we're doing a little litmus test to make sure, are we not busy, way out of whack, or?
Well, that's, that was, kind of, my first question was about the bond, if we were gonna get a bond, I'd say yes, we put it out to bid.
Okay.
Like, let's say, just looking into the future, if we said, okay, we're gonna get a bid, and the townspeople went along, uh, not a bid, a bond, and the townspeople went along with it, then we should put that out to bid, because it's a larger package and all that, and I would feel that that would be a good time to do it.
I think goodwill he's expressed towards this town would help him a lot in the bidding process.
Yeah, well, he's his competitor.
Right, well, that, that's the only thing I'm concerned with, I just don't want someone to come back and start accusing the board of you of saying, why did you not put this out to bid?
Uh, not to dwell on everything for a bond, but that paving is a set price, whether it's base paving, finished coat paving a lot, but a lot of contractors, they'll charge you one thing for base paving, another thing for top paving, this is just, I said, I want a straight-through price, so we just know how much it is a ton. It's a lot easier to deal with.
Oh, yeah.
So he's willing to do stuff like that, and.
And as you said, we're so small, he's accommodating for us.
And like I said, they have all the, all the stuff to work with, and they don't rely on subcontractors. In the past, since I've been road agent, we've used like Spite, which is an excellent company, but if they're too busy, they might hire this guy to come do the paving.
Okay.
So, or, or another gentleman.
Another gal or something.
So this is the company that we work with and the ones that we work.
Okay, thank you.
In the past, you've only gotten like two or three bids.
Yeah, you've seen it.
You know, I mean, what, what year, I think you only had one other bid.
Yeah, and it, a lot of towns do this, you know, they form a relationship, and they just, they do it, but again, they do bids every once in a while, and that's why I used to do that.
I could see, especially if it was going up, but he's, he's kept it flat, so.
Yeah, no, yeah.
If, if, like you said, if it was bonded, you would have a substantial amount of mileage that they're doing, so, I mean.
You would bring in some other.
It would bring in people, and we'd get, and have all sharp pencils.
Exactly.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Motion been made.
Uh, how long's that?
Yeah.
Anybody second it? It was only second, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
You all settled it?
Yes.
I think that's all we have.
Thanks, guys, appreciate your cooperation and working on this.
Yeah.
I, I also gave you a copy of the, the, the reserve.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm not. Who doesn't all settle up?
No, we did the other purpose that way.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you for the sale on the road, it was worthwhile for that.
Yeah, that was, I was hoping that you didn't have to go, but.
Thanks. My driveway was slippery, though.
Okay.
The next on the agenda is review of the department budgets for twenty twenty-one, the bottom line totals.
Okay, so, last week, the morning.
I forgot to, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you this, just so you know, the next couple of weeks, we're gonna have the frosties.
You ordered them in already?
Yeah, I think we'll probably be, uh, next couple of weeks, just so you know, before anybody wondered whether we're gonna show them.
Thank you.
See ya.
He's ordering them in, that's nice, Jeff.
Okay, Lee, which page am I supposed to be looking at?
Okay, so the expenditures, the twelve pages.
That one, beautiful. Expenditures, I got you.
So the only changes I made, if you turned to, let's see here, I made an adjustment to recording secretary, page one. I made an, uh, change to. The. Few things that I mentioned about moving constantly into, uh, one line and moving it out of another line that you're aware of. Um, the big change that I made was in the police department, and that is on page, um, eight and page nine. So if you look at the fifth account going down, I changed the description of that account to read new, full-time officer, police officer, six months. See that?
Yes.
And then.
Lee, where does that, we see the page eight in the middle.
Halfway down.
Oh, new, okay.
So I just love the, the old description, as you can see that, it used to read Detective Police Department. Now I'm using the same account number, but I'm earmarking the money for that position that we're potentially creating.
And you're gonna show us where you've increased your line?
Well, you can see in the description below, the salary is twenty-five oh zero one two, which is what is in budget in that department. And then the other items are listed below, so there's twenty-sixth of the Hampshire retirement, health, family, twenty-six weeks, dental, twenty-six weeks, short-term, long-term disability, Medicare, and other taxes, so the total for the new officer is forty-one, one thirty-nine, sixty-one, but both other numbers have been adjusted in my lines.
That's what I was asking.
So the Hampshire retirement has increased four thousand two thirty-seven, the health, uh, medical has increased ten thousand sixty. But it was easier for me to just put it right there, so you can see a full picture of what the changes were that will affect this six months. And then you guys also asked me to reduce the gas to eleven thousand, so that's a change there. Uh, one other change that, uh, was brought to my attention after, uh, the board met on page two at the bottom, the audit services. We've had the same firm for the last sixty years, they held their rate at thirteen five, it's usually a three-year renewal, uh, and they, the list of rates for those three years, he has reached out to me and said that he's not able to maintain that rate again, because it's been, it's been going on for so long, so they will be providing me with a, a new type of contract, and if the board decides to, well, we put it up to bid on the unit at that time, so I've budgeted twenty thousand to cover possible, um, bidding for audit services. So that, that increase from thirteen five to twenty.
Okay.
Okay, so, um.
Just for the record, he has pulled the bid, um, it's always nice to have, he's done a great job, there's no doubt about his work, his work is superior.
Yes.
But sometimes good to give second opinion.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Other than that, we are adjusted the welfare, over, admin overseer, welfare, and they did confirm that that one percent increase, so that was a slight increase there. And then, uh, I added a dollar for a firework, so your total proposed budget as presented from your department and amended by the board is two million seven hundred thirteen thousand two thirty-nine on the very last page. The twenty twenty budget was two million six fifty-eight two oh two, which is a reflection of fifty-five thousand thirty-seven dollar increase, or two point oh seven percent over last year's budget. We'll go over those numbers in more detail on the next week, if I can. As I mentioned last week, the revenues were, um, voted on and approved, and what I informed the board of was that we had an official number for the grant for the mill quarter, and then the Cemetery Trustees is going to petition, um, requesting money from the, um, Cemetery Fund of fifteen eighty-two. So I've a, I've increased the revenues by, uh, just over four thousand dollars, so the projected revenues that we'll use to offset the taxes is one million ninety-nine thousand one twenty-two. The twenty twenty budget was, um, one million one forty-one nine forty-eight, the board agreed that we should be a little more conservative because of COVID. So that's a decrease over last year's of forty-two thousand eight twenty-six. And then below that, I also, uh, took what we actually collected, is one million two nineteen two eighty-three, and our projected for twenty twenty was one million one forty-one nine forty-eight, so there's a revenue surplus of seventy-seven thousand three thirty-five. Okay? Now, if you go to the single sheet that I provided for you in color, that's a summary page, um, the proposed budget, the, uh, warrant articles, your surplus, and your revenues, so in the middle column, that says, um, well, actually, I'll start from the left column. The, uh, the twenty twenty budget was two million six fifty-eight two oh two, the actual budget spent was two million three sixty-four five eighty-one, so that is a lapsing surplus of two hundred ninety-three thousand six twenty-one as of today. It may be another small, um, batch, or a payable batch that will come out of this that will reduce it slightly.
And that's the seventy-seven thousand in it?
That's just the expenditure side, that's two hundred ninety-three thousand six twenty-one. So the increase from the projected budget and last year's approved budget is fifty-five thousand oh thirty-seven, which is about two point oh seven. Okay, um, so on the next, below the blue, um, square, I put the expenses lapsing, two ninety-three six twenty-one, the excess revenues, which I referenced on the other report, seventy-seven three thirty-five, so total lapsing to unassigned funds balance surplus is three hundred seventy-nine fifty-six. Okay?
Let's see, to the right, it looks like our warrants are two hundred fifty-one thousand.
From taxes, so are they down on the lower now, all your warrants are listed, are listed in the left. Uh, warrants from taxes are in the middle, that comes two fifty-one, and then the impact for just the warrants are sixty-four cents. So in the middle of that, you're, um, I believe the operating budget's gonna be Article eight, um, our proposed budget is two million seven thirteen two thirty-nine, our projected revenues is one million ninety-nine of one twenty-two, so that leaves a, a source of raising from taxes is one million six fourteen one one seven. That times the twenty twenty assessment from the reval year is a four dollars and nine cent impact. The, um, estimated twenty twenty for the budget last year was four forty-six, but that was before we got our rebound numbers. Um, tax rate setting for the rebound with the warrant, it's way down at the bottom, your sixty-four cents for warrant, your four dollars and seventy-three cents is included with the operating budget, so it's four oh nine plus the sixty-four cents, so your total operating budget and warrant comes to four seventy-three. The twenty twenty reval rate set by the ta, by the DRA actually reduced the projected four forty-six down to three dollars and eighty cents, so just with the set tax rate from municipal rate, there is a projected increase of many three cents, if we don't win the budget that's proposed, all the warrants from.
Hey, that money, that keeps all the surplus, all the money.
We're now touching a, a nickel of the surplus of this.
And I see you recommending twenty-five dollar, twenty-five thousand to pay the DRA at five percent of the surplus.
That's what we had done last year, I think we have to increase that, but I did not include that in the total, that's my option last year, I apologize.
Okay, so, but we should, uh, since our expenses go up, we should maintain the five percent?
Well, if you remember, the DRA spreadsheet that I presented to you, remember Dave, the, even though we kept the budget flat, we had a reduction in our, um, our overall tax rate, the budget continues to increase, so the five percent is actually, is growing.
It's gonna grow with it.
So we came in at what, four point seven percent for the five, for that recommended number, and that's the number that the.
Where did you see the twenty-five thousand, Mike?
That's just a, a memo that's in, um, the left-hand column, retained issue. I should have put question marks in there, allowing you guys to work with that, but.
I didn't see that on the page.
There is some substantial, it's in the middle of.
Yeah, I see.
Okay.
Now, explain to me one other thing down at the bottom.
Yeah.
I see we got to the four point seven three, adding the warrants to it.
Yeah.
And what is the three eighty?
Three eighty is last year's tax rate, because we had projected it would be four forty-six for the operating budget.
Yeah.
But after reval.
But really, that three eighty means nothing to us.
It really doesn't, correct, but there will be, to the, the general public or the taxpayer, they're gonna see last year's municipal tax rate at three eighty, which includes all your warrants in the operating budget, this year it's gonna go at ninety-three cents, so.
So the three eighty versus the four seventy?
Yeah, if you're basing it year to year.
Okay. So we have a ninety-three cent increase, but we haven't used any of our excess revenues yet?
Yes, correct.
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 And, but it doesn't include all our budget increases and warrants?
Correct.
Don't forget, we, the other gentleman, uh, is there another warrant still pending, uh, I petitioned, is the warrant, uh?
That is not a, a fund of money, it is a request to adopt another RSA.
Right.
Given to, uh, so it's a virtual, you got one?
Yeah, which would have an effect on taxes eventually.
Next year, when it's, if it passes, it'll affect, uh, twenty twenty-two.
So all the money warrants are in.
Right.
You got, you got, the, the decision. You gotta, you gotta, the, the decision I think Lee was presenting to us, we have a surplus, we have a tax rate, and we have to do three things, uh, reserve, well, how much money are we paying in the reserve? And how much we wanna offset taxes, if we wanna offset at all?
Do we have a separate worksheet showing any of that?
With the, what, uh, an adjustment, would be, it wouldn't take long for me to do that, if you wanna make it slower or?
Yeah, I think, uh, when we continue through the rest of the budget, maybe if you do that, then we can come back and like just, it'll give us a clean page to look at, okay, here's our budget, here's the increase, here's our revenues. We can decide where we wanna put the revenues, or, um, you know, adjust the percentages so they work out for the town as well as keeping our five percent.
What is, what do you want me to work with, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, or fifty thousand is not gonna do much?
No, what I'd like to do is, is take the number.
So let me just give you an example, if you say you use a hundred thousand, you take a hundred thousand divided by our assessment. So a hundred thousand divided by our assessment, three nine four, three six three, equals eight equals, and then times it by a thousand. You're looking at a twenty-five cent decrease, so a hundred thousand dollars will only decrease the tax rate by twenty-five cents.
And we're, we're basically going up ninety-three over cents over last year. What I was gonna do, Lee, is I was gonna look at the D R A.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and try and work that number to the five percent, whether it's twenty-five or thirty-five or forty thousand.
Okay.
And then take the balance of that number, okay, and put it towards the tax rate, then see where we're at, and then we can play with the number there, you know what I mean? Then we, our D R A is taken care of.
I'll, I'll operate it and begin.
Yep, and, and then we can see where the rest of the number actually brings us from that point.
Because I know that the way they calculate that five percent, I think it also includes all the expenses of the warrants. So it's not the true ten point seven million for the operating budget, their number is a lot higher.
It's a lot higher, but it actually, because we're, we're in a, we're a town that pays cash, we don't have bonds for a lot of the stuff. It actually, you know, five percent can be a lot lower.
Right.
It's okay to be on the lower board end of that.
You know, we were like under five percent, we were at four point seven something.
Four point seven, I think it was.
Yeah.
So do you want me to do it with, including all the warrants, take the warrants and the budget?
Yeah, I would say true.
I don't know, it didn't.
I've gotta look, I've gotta look at that.
That would bring that up to seven hundred thousand if you did that, I don't think you could do the warrants and the budgets.
Yeah.
I think you'd do the budget to start with.
Okay.
If you do it more.
With the balance against the.
It would bring it up to seven hundred thousand in there if you did the warrants too.
Very, right.
See, where our warrants are bonded warrants, the school has to worry about their money because they have bonded warrants.
We have, we have.
We have no bonded warrants.
Right, and those can go away, you don't have to vote for, put those on the warrant every year if you don't want it.
So yeah, why don't we do that? Take the budget and do the uh, five percent, and then take the balance, Lee.
Okay. We can, we can, we can.
Sure.
There's not much, there's just more box, so I'll see how quick I can get this figured out.
Really, it doesn't.
Go ahead, Lee. Okay, I'm looking at this here, you guys are asking all the departments to come in that level funding services and everything. You're not looking at, you're telling building maintenance and improvement line, the two hundred thousand, you used seventy-two thousand last year. And you're telling everybody you don't know what this is gonna be, why did you drop that number down?
Well, we're not dropping that down, Lee, it's, last year we didn't have time with the COVID to try and develop that um, second floor sprinkler system to protect that building. I'd like to attack that this year, Bob's done some work on the front steps, and a couple of projects in there that we'd like to get in play that, you know, frankly, I pushed off this year because of all the extra meetings and the COVID and whatnot, I'd like to get that work done this year.
Yeah, okay.
We were hoping it would be done last year, Lee, which would have taken a good chunk of that.
I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm hearing what you guys have been saying, nobody knows what this year's gonna bring.
Yeah.
And so, you don't know, you know, where people are gonna be sitting, where's the money?
Right.
So my attitude would be that that could be a down payment towards that, or you could do it in two phases like you told Don, and start it and have the second phase that finish up.
But the beauty of it is, uh, Lee, uh, by having the money in the line, the thing is, uh, we didn't expend the money this year, so where does the money go? It's gonna go back to offset the tax, it's gonna go back to tax breaks.
I understand.
But if we, if we limit ourselves, we may be, let's say we have a major repair we have to encounter for the town. The thing is, we have to have enough money in our maintenance line to afford repairs, some of the projects we wanted. And, and for some reason, let's say it's another crappy year like we've had this past, the last year, it goes back to your pocket.
Yeah, I understand that.
And, and the thing is, we're, we're gonna be very judicious in the sense that we're not gonna keep that, that surplus. I, I, I know we're just talking, we're gonna talk about it in a minute, but that money's gonna be offsetting the taxes to, to bring it back to you.
I understand that.
The, the, the big thing, Lee, is we push that down the road a couple of years now, we'd like to try and get that done.
I do understand that, all I'm saying is, this is an extraordinary time.
Right.
You know, had you not had the COVID, your, your probably would have been, your uh, income would have been greater anyways. You wouldn't be so worried about where we're gonna be next year, and you would say, hey, we can do this. But with, with the uncertain times that we had, I, I myself believe that it doesn't make any difference if you wait one more year. Or like I said, you could start, get things going, and complete it after, just like you said, the dawn, you know, do it in two phases.
But there are, there are other issues with that building that we ought to attend to eventually, and those would be in those other years, so. And, and, the thing is, um.
Well, I'm just, definitely, that's my opinion.
No, and if we cut the budget, we lose the flexibility of the board to do anything, because we wanted the, the money there. And when you see these numbers, Lee, I think we're gonna keep this budget fairly well flat back to the taxpayers, even during the COVID year.
Because again, you know, there's the people out there that aren't working, they're not getting much money, you know, and people that have kids, you know, that are, they're paying for, for care and stuff like that, so the money coming out of their pockets more so than ever before. So it's just, for me, it's a good idea, as I said, you're asking all the other departments to come in flat, and for me, it would make sense if you had kind of like kept it a little low, that's all. It was here before, you know, things can be done. But, that's my opinion.
So, I appreciate it.
Okay, I don't know if I can figure it out accurately, you need to give me a bigger number.
Well, we could do it for next week, Lee.
This is the tax rate, yeah. Next week is your last regular meeting before your public hearing. And the reason why I'm hesitant to give you a number that has the correct information, if you look at the total that they're looking at, it's eight million, seven thirty-six. I wanna confirm that what you're basing the five percent on, which is on the back, is for that whole dollar amount, the whole tax rate, and not just the whole.
Well, if you look here, if, if you see the five percent retained is at five hundred and ten, we have four forty-two in it. So if you take the difference between them two, Lee.
Yeah.
And use that amount of money to start with.
Okay, and apply that to.
Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, so.
So.
You follow me guys down, the five percent recorded.
But I think what we, we avoided to do last time, because of the difference.
Yeah.
I'd have to add the increase to the increase from the last year.
Yes.
Was fifty-five thousand.
Yes.
Thirty-seven, plus the difference of that, and then we would be at five percent. Would you say, yes, or close to it? So if I.
Yeah, I, she wasn't adding the increase, we all did what I did, which is smart.
Yeah, but you're adding it to this.
Right, which is last, that's last year's money.
Right.
And we're gonna take.
So if you take eighty-seven, thirty-six, fifteen, five sixteen, plus fifty-five thousand.
Sure, that's actually point seven, point six seven percent. So, four.
That's more right.
Two, four.
For the eighty-seven.
So it's point six seven equals two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars.
Wow.
Two oh nine.
Now, once you have the fifty-five thousand in the number, you should multiply it by five percent.
Okay, so if I do fifty-five thousand, seven, plus four, one, four, nine, that comes to four ninety-seven, one forty-one, and then multiply by five percent? Okay, so, one, and, so, two forty-eight, now twenty-four thousand, eight fifty-seven. Fifty-seven, point oh five, so it's another, it's twenty-five thousand more.
Right, which is if you took the five-ten-twenty-two minus four forty-two, you would come up with that same total, just about.
Okay, so, we're talking about the same amount of money on this, we wanna put back in, visit.
But we actually set aside twenty-five from last year.
Right, right, so we wanna continue that.
So instead of twenty-five, then you wanna do sixty-eight thousand to get your five percent retention. Under the excess revenue. If you wanna make it easy, you can round it off to seventy thousand, don't worry, son. But if we totally did the calculation here, then it comes to five hundred and ten thousand. Means what we would need to retain five percent of last year's budget.
Oh, I, I wasn't even.
We had four hundred and forty-two in there, okay? So when you're adding the fifty-five thousand, when you have to flip over to your front page, and we needed to add it to the total tax out of, after from eight thousand, eight million, seven hundred thirty-six, point five sixteen.
So.
And then take five percent of that.
So the difference is sixty-seven, nine eighteen, plus the overage, which is fifty-five thousand, thirty-seven, right? So I'm doing this.
Yeah.
That's one twenty-two, nine fifty-five. Is what we would want to retain or leave in surplus.
Well, minus twenty-five, you wanted to have it in there.
I did not include that in at all.
I wanted that.
That was just, or, I wanted to leave it in the template so I can plan on budgeting something. So out of that, three seventy-nine, fifty-six, we're looking at one twenty-two, nine fifty-five reserve, because that's an increase, fifty-five.
Yeah.
And then the difference.
Yeah, but what you don't understand is, you're adding the whole fifty-five thousand, you remember, instead of five percent of fifty-five thousand. Right, fifty-five thousand is your increase on the budget.
Yep.
So you're only trying to retain five percent of that fifty-five thousand and put towards that rainy day fund. You're adding in the whole fifty-five thousand. Yeah, 'cause you take your overall budget, Lee.
Twenty-five, two grand.
Yeah, about three thousand dollars.
So add that to the sixty-seven, that's what I was saying, if you wanna round it out to seventy thousand dollars.
Spot on, spot on, perfect.
You're either a little above five percent or right at five percent.
Right, because we're about seventy thousand short already, and that, that works.
So if you keep that number, Lee, instead of twenty-five thousand, make it seventy thousand, and take the balance of the revenue.
Yeah, seventy thousand, seventy thousand, six thirty-three.
Sometimes you don't make the motion, take a hundred thousand out of reserves.
Yeah.
For all that taxes.
So you're gonna increase your surplus by seventy thousand, six thirty-three.
Right, I agree with that, yes.
Okay, so then do your numbers from the balance after that.
Okay, and you want me to apply it to warrants, or, I mean, you're looking at sixty-four cents there for the warrants. So we have three seventy, nine fifty-six, minus, we're gonna round it, seventy-one thousand.
Okay.
Your surplus is two ninety-nine.
Two ninety-nine.
Nine fifty-six, which is three hundred, you may have a little bit of spending on.
That takes about seventy-five cents off.
And how much you have to on warrants?
It covers the sixty-four cents, so it covers the, covers the warrants and then appeal a little bit more. But remember, last year, we got in a little trouble last year, um, perception-wise, we came in, no cost to the taxpayers, we take from surplus. A lot of people didn't, I thought the, the audience didn't appreciate that a little bit, because it, it, there was a cost, which is warrant. And we were offsetting it with surplus. I, I, I would rather have the warrants stand on their own for the money, and put the money, to put the surplus towards the actual tax rate. I, because think, people were thinking like, no impact on taxes, wow, and you already paid the money, it's your money. And, and there is an impact on taxes, because it's already, we already took out any warrant.
But what you use, is, is what you're saying, you wanna do it when you set the tax rate, or do you wanna do it?
No, he wants to do it at this meeting, with X amount of money towards the tax basis.
And let the warrants stay on their own.
As we did last year.
No, last year, what last year we did is, we applied it to some of the warrants, so we took, we basically erased all our warrants and made them zeroed out.
That's right.
To the taxpayer, and then still kept excess money in the budget.
And applied it towards the.
But it was hard for the voters to understand that, because they had already had that money from the year before. So they didn't understand, they used on no warrants.
Right.
So they can vote a warrant down, and then what would you do?
Right, I, I'd let the warrants stand by themselves.
So that two ninety-nine is equal to the seventy-six cents.
Yeah, I said seventy-five, so I'm pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would take seventy-five cents off the tax rate, and as it seems right now, it almost brings it down to, um, uh, seventy, let me see, just uh.
Airborne says zero, maybe more.
Well, four.
Well, our operating budget is four oh nine, you'd be reducing it by seventy-six cents.
We don't wanna end up having your checks back.
We won't.
We won't, geez.
It'd be about three dollars and thirty-three cents, three thirty-four, which is less than last year, and then you have had the warrants in there, like, for sixty-four cents. It'll bring it back up to um, uh, three, uh, four dollars.
And we have increased, and maybe leave it on the seventy thousand, which we wanted to keep up to five percent.
Right. And so, we're talking about a four-dollar increase, it's a twenty cent increase from last year, that's palatable.
Three ninety-seven, projected new rate, and um.
So, Lee, you know.
Yeah, seventeen cents, actually, over.
Yeah, you know what we're talking about doing, why don't you just set up a worksheet for next week that shows us that pretty good?
Okay.
And then we'll follow it and.
We're just gonna use the two nine.
Make a decision.
Warrant staying by itself, up or down, and, and anyone don't.
I will agree with you, and they didn't work out like the way we thought that would, because people thought it's free money, and it shouldn't be shown as free.
Right.
Even though we were trying to do the right thing and.
Right, but, but we're not gonna give it back to them in the form of, we're reducing the tax bill for them.
Right.
But that's a one-time reduction, as the budget goes increases, there's still gonna be an impact.
Right, but, but the thing is, I, I think the, the analogy is, we didn't spend all the money on the high. That's tax period, uh, uh, not the high period, but maintenance line.
So it's going back to.
Going back to tax period now.
All right, why don't we do that, Lee, and then next week we'll make a decision on that, on giving the numbers.
All right, but it looks like no more than a twenty cent increase when I sign.
I didn't think it was gonna be, our revenues come out fairly decent, we need to jump.
And we were conservative, too.
And we're even more conservative this year, so.
And hopefully, the increase of seventeen cents will be offset, I mean, we're gonna. Leave from.
Exactly. Actually, but, but the risk we have this year going forward, state revenues may be down.
Correct, yeah.
And so, w- w- we're being, we're being prepared for that mentally, you know, we don't wanna get, you know.
Right.
Caught short, we could be.
I mean, did you wanna go out through this um, consulting summary statement on the capital.
I provided that for you, because the warrants as presented, um, they, they can go up or down, they can be removed, you guys can change your mind, but the closing market, this is September thirty-first statement, and the warrants that will apply to the town would be the uh, rebound, which is as an ending down to fifty-four thousand, will be deposited in fifteen in there. Uh, the highway capital reserve has seventy-one thousand, will be deposited in fifteen there. Fire department, he's spending a hundred and twenty, but he's also depositing sixty, so the balance is two seventy currently.
When you say deposit, this is last year's deposits.
This is ending December thirty-fourth, twenty twenty, so that's what they have in the bank right now, to speak.
And we get thirteen dollars worth of income?
Yeah, for all, for all, no, I think that's the month.
Even so, an eight hundred thousand?
And then we have um, a transfer station has seven thousand, we're putting in, the transfer station, it's twenty thousand.
That's, when you say putting in, that's the new one.
That's the new one that we're proposing, so that'll increase those balances, so.
Right.
If you're following the capital incumbent plan, that's where this statement would come in handy, uh, determine if we're on track with what we're projecting for um, available funding to replace the big equipment.
Right. Well, the fire department looks healthy, but he just shocked us with the price of a truck.
Yeah.
At lunch, I said, he's gonna have a half a million on a truck out in a couple of years, have a.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it sounds big, but it's really, it's not.
He said, he said it'd be somewhere around maybe 400,000 for that.
Yeah, so we're just barely halfway there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've really backed down on a long of our deposits, so it's a little tiny.
Are some of these schools?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I see the special ed fund has. It's good to see all on one page. Thank you, Lee.
Yeah.
Okay, so that takes care of our.
Lee, I just want to say thank you. That was very clear down the standard how you presented it tonight.
Department budget, revenues, all the others.
Again, I just want to remind you next week if you ask me if I'm giving the, the adjustment change or if you want to try to.
I, I, I think you're 99% there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on my final report diligently, probably putting in extra hours when I'm not getting interrupted and I'll be hounding everyone to get their reports in. Because there's a very small window for me to get those out immediately after our work hearing. Any final changes have to be some, uh, updated to the report and then by the Monday after, I have to get that to the printer for proof.
Okay, I'm going to go to mailbox items. We've got a few things to clean up in here.
You want a warrant, you want to give a warrant?
I thought we, uh.
Well, I think it's pretty much.
It's all we say.
Okay, so are we going to vote on it now or?
No, we should do, do that after the work hearing.
Right, okay.
But if you have a chance to read it, if you see anything that I missed at, um, mistake. Yeah, okay. Send an email or looking on my cell phone. Again, the other one I have not updated is number four and obviously on that, because closer to being somewhere. Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, it's going to be number four.
Okay, going to mailbox items on the agenda. Um, we've got a couple of things to clean up here. On the winter stipend on call, we had made the one-ton truck $55 an hour, just as corrected to $57 an hour. We'd like to make a motion that the effective November 50th, 2020, highway contractor willing to maintenance on call stipend, one-ton plow truck be adjusted from $55 to $57.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor?
And this was a, it was administrator error.
Uh, so I guess we don't have to sign that, the motion's been made.
No, we have a proposal.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's for county purposes, I like to have.
I'll sign my point just so it's. What's today's date, uh?
21st.
1/21/21? Oh, that's scary. Okay, um, an update on Kimmel Pond Road. I spoke.
Oh, we want to talk, do you not bump in that way?
I think we have to just.
Okay.
I spoke with Mike Kaminsky about, um, doing the abatement for the asbestos in the building.
Mike Kaminsky.
Coming, I'm sorry. Um, and it is a state and federal law that it be done, no matter if it's a town building or not. We thought last week that a town building might be exempt from it. That being said, I got a list of contractors within the state that would do it and I talked to a local firm that, um, our road agent Jeff Crosby just used for another builder down in Gostown. And, uh, I have an appointment on Monday for him to come and do the sample testing. It looks like he charges us, it's about four hours at $65 an hour to do the, um, to come out, do the fieldwork and do the batching up and send it out for the test. He said it typically takes about 10 tests per home and they run $25 each. So it's a pretty minimal charge and it will all be done above board, by the books and he'll give us the report back within two weeks so we can finish up on that building.
Okay.
So, um, I got the keys back. In fact, for my, before I leave, when I get Grandma's done, I can give her the keys to that building. So I'll meet them up there Monday or Tuesday. He said he could leave with us and send them out and then two weeks we'll have the report back. I called the insurance company, Lee, and I came in this week to ask what the next step was to do and find out what the, um, the depreciation would be on here. And basically, the insurance agent for Primex explained, if we were rebuilding the building, the difference in money that they offered us versus the 126,000 dollars is if you rebuilt it new right now and showed them the invoices, it costs more than what they're willing to pay out as cash value now because it's increased, she would pay out those depreciation, uh, depreciation.
That's replacement value.
But since we're not going to do that demolition, we're only funded back what the actual cash value was in the building. Which we looked at it last time and it was, um.
The nineties.
Yeah, our total check will be coming, it's 93,900, uh, 396.68. So 93,396.68. And that includes $5,500 for the removal of the tree and debris.
Right.
Uh, in that check. She's actually cutting that check later, it'll be next day or two.
Will that be considered as anticipated revenue?
That will be for this year.
On the whole chart, on the whole chart.
So, um, so that check will come in and then we will use funds out of that, I guess, to, to do the demolition and whatnot. So it's not above and beyond that for the, for the town. Um, I did talk with her about the asbestos testing and she said if any part of the asbestos testing that was from the tree damage, she would pay for that above and beyond. So in other words, where the shingles got damaged, if the shingles have asbestos in them, they would pay those bills. If you go to an undamaged part of the building, they don't pay for that. So as the guy does his testing, I'll let him keep notes on where he is in the building. And if we find any in that area, which I don't think, well, I look like standard asphalt shingles to me, we'll resubmit them that she said she'd pay for. So you guys all good with that?
I'm good, consensus is yes.
Okay. Um, Jeff has called about shutting off the electricity. Apparently the previous tenant didn't call like he said he'd do. I asked Jeff to get in touch with Lee and they said that they would transfer it to the town's name.
I did that today.
And so we'll have it shut off.
The process was to transfer the, um, utilities to the name of town. There may be some costs from that. But then they'll have an immediate shut off authorized. And they, after talking to the one girl who transferred me to another individual, she had a better idea of this is a condemned building that's been damaged that could potentially be a fire hazard, it's electricity, sparks, whatever. And so she, uh, looked at it a little bit more aggressively and said that she would take care of it. It seemed like they were giving us a runaround a little bit, but we're all set now. Tomorrow, don't contact me and let me know when that problem's.
Yeah, they just have to be careful about, um, overstepping the renters' rights.
Right, you don't put that, that's normal.
Remember, somebody might want to ring this Peter Carter.
Yeah. We don't have to pay for the demo.
It's happened before, you know.
We don't have to pay for the demo if they want.
Maybe we should put the war general.
Um, and we did check, uh, I checked the post just yesterday and the post is there, the ring's on. So just keeping an eye on it as I go through.
Good.
Um, okay, so that's it on that, I see update there and, uh, um, I did call the building department, tell them that I am meeting them out there so he can hear that we are going to do the proper testing and he's, uh, on board with that, I guess. Okay, uh, Lee has posted the public hearing for the warrant. The public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 4th, 2021, beginning at 7:05 PM, right here at the Dunbar Town offices. And, uh, we will be getting help from the building department at Dawn. We'll be in here for the Zoom meeting for that section of. So that's part of.
Probably not on the, on the website. I, I did meet the deadline if I didn't.
This is a notice from Mike Cummins of Millrent earlier in the weekend last week in reference to the asbestos. People have fallen in that guideline. One thing I was going to ask Jeff while I was here, I wanted to ask him about this, um, Winslow Town Forest as well as the, as well as the other town pit that, um, we're going to have questions about. If you could maybe, uh, talk with Jeff this week and have him let us know for next week, so. But I'd like to get back to this, uh, societal protection, the anti-abortion. This is the second letter.
I did send the, all of Town Forest an email, but he doesn't go to his email that often, so.
And, uh, it's, it's in reference to shifting executory interest of the Winslow Corporation. Winslow Town Forest, 130 acres. And, uh, so we'll wait to hear back from the Town Forest on that.
Yeah, but I did scan that to the Town Forest as well because they're the ones that would be.
Yeah, with Jeff sitting here on that, so.
When do they meet next time, if you're asking?
March maybe, maybe.
Okay, okay.
You might want to ask Jeff if they're going to meet, um, to make some decisions before then.
Okay.
Boy, you know, if they, if they meet, they could send an interim response to the gentleman saying, not blowing off, but it's a, actually, work, work progress, upcoming meeting is, Lee, with this. So I guess we send the list, the meeting response back to the gentleman saying, uh, we, committee's going to meet, they're going to discuss it, we anticipate early March. If that's acceptable to you, let us know. And, uh, because it's a committee of volunteers.
Right.
It's something we really don't control, it is a separate committee.
Okay, Mary Gerald, um, her dad passed away. And, uh, so we have a signed here, a card to sign. Symphony card.
The board has a policy to, um, send out flowers or donation to their interest for a certain dollar amount, should qualify for the the maintenance in the states.
Yeah, I think we should. Boards in consensus to that. Uh, we have another one here. George Holmes' dad passed away and as you guys know, George is on several, uh, several boards in the town conservation commission, planning board, longtime member, so we'd like to send him a sympathy card as well.
And just for the record, I feel bad for George. He can be, he can be wearing the gloves, he gets exposed to a personal COVID. He doesn't have it, but, um, poor George. I think it was his second time, he's been in someone in the office or something like that. Did you hear that, Dave?
Yeah, I did.
But he's doing the right thing by, uh, quarantining himself.
Okay. We have a cover sheet of the Dunbar Town Report. Um, I really like this one with the town hall in it, it looks really nice. Um, then the banister, then they're all lit up with the trees. I'd ask Lee to maybe take this one here, which shows the cremation gardens and make that a smaller block down here in all the corners and try that for one of the covers for us. Or we could wait a week or so and decide that if you want to do that last picture.
Yeah.
Do you want to take a look at Mike? No, I don't know, here's the, very nice. I thought the Christmas, the, uh, the library looked great.
Yeah, it really did. And I, I didn't notice it first, but this one here shows a separation between the three pictures. And this one, they're all touching, but I do like the separation.
Yeah, the cemetery, I just don't think adds anything to it. I think it takes away.
Yeah, I mean, whenever you guys decide, okay, it would be an option.
Yep. Next week is going to be plenty of time for you.
Wait until you do those.
Yeah, no, I can, I saw them.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not sure Dawn's planning on putting anything in his, with his cemetery report. I can ask her if.
If he's got room for a picture, you could do that picture on that page. Okay.
So choose one of those and go with it?
Yeah. The, uh, library picture, it looks very nice.
Yeah.
Uh, we have here a package for reading of, uh, the select board about the Merrimack County budget for the year 2021. And, uh, the Merrimack County budget has a proposed budget of 95,797,898. So that's for reading from the select board, it's all on the leisure. Uh, we have another letter here from Jamie Johnson from Gostown. Looks like a job board witness is asking us.
Hey, I was wondering, just on the, uh, county budget.
Yeah.
Are they, uh, is that not significantly or is it, they're trying to do the same thing that we're all, all accounts do?
Only reading that was at the bottom, but that's, that's for this calendar year, right, 2021?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it did go up, so.
Hopefully not a lot because I, because I, look at all these towns are hurting. The, the county should be, uh, basically.
Their increase is only 2.95%.
All right, that's not too bad.
And they have a reduction in property tax of 350,000, so with that reduction, it's not much of an increase.
That was my concern. I hate to see.
And they utilize 6,450,000 of prior year fundamentals to keep that budget lower. They're doing the same thing we're doing.
I'm glad to see they're doing that.
I was looking here, there's an old letter in here in reference to Winslow Town Forest that we just spoke about. Again, this is a COVID inch, stuff we spoke about last week. Last week and last week. Now I have one other item. Oh, it's written up on the edge, it's in here. We had a letter last week from Alfonso Alfano La Hafas in reference to public right of way of the old discontinued and non-discontinued section of Old Route 13. I've read through this, information about the old Route 13 and I've looked at the town documents that were provided to us from there. And, um, you know, in reading this, it does look like that section of Old Route 13, was not discontinued and is a town road, current town road. And it looks like this stuff is being placed in the way of that right of way. And, uh, even if it was discontinued, the landowners beyond that have right to use that section of road to access their land. So it shouldn't be blocked whether it was discontinued or, um, or a town road.
Right, but they, they highlighted that in that, in the town meeting that that piece of road along with, I think, two other lo, two other lots.
Yeah.
areas, uh, were going to remain the town. And the other discontinued parts of the road, they said the owners would own to the center of the road.
Yeah.
So, you know, unless something changed around that road, and I don't know what Jeff has for information now.
Yeah, he's going to provide.
But whatever he provides us would, would shed enough light on that so that maybe we want to discuss that when we see where Jeff ends.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do. And also we have a letter from Pat Fanciaco, which is going to be the attorney for the opposite, landowner for the Mitch Bernard property. And, uh, she's asking us to let her know of our proceedings so she can be present. What I'd like to do, Lee, is send her a letter that we're in receipt and she also has copied on this letter from Alfonso La Hafas. And if she has any information she'd like us to consider on our findings, then we'd like her to provide that to us for our next select board meeting so we can review it.
Right.
And then we'll try to make a decision. Now, just to go a little bit further, one board of selection did make an issuance in 2002 when this issue came up back then. That, that was a town road to that point and they thought that there should be no. That was a town road to that point, and they thought that there should be an old structure in that road. So this is the second time in 20 years.
Yes, that's a adjustment, until we see some documentation, it would be very helpful, you know.
That's my, I'm quick for it.
So I think along with Jeff's, if we can get anything that Pat has that she wants us to consider, then we'll.
Is that something that, a letter from the other attorney, is that something that she should get a copy of?
She's already been CC'd on the.
Well, she did get a copy, okay.
So she was, she was already made aware of it, and now she's seeing, seeing us. And she's saying she wants to be present. We don't mind having her come to next week's meeting, but we'd like to have her information to read before she comes.
Right, it'd be nice to, not, write an opinion from her, well, how, think she sees things, so we can be fair as we make any judgments.
Because sometimes these things happen where somebody, because the road ends, they see that they start using a land, and it becomes their property, you know, and maybe that's the situation here.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not happening in just one spot. So. You know, and there's, there's, there's these situations all over town, you know, we have Everett Road over where Mike lives, we've got County Road here, we've got Gini Road, it's all kinds of roads in towns with the same situation that we can't let people start encroaching on the town's rights to these roads, we've got, you know, the board of selection and the company body owns those. Lean, I think that's it on our, that's in our schedule, so.
I assume you have that one request, the non-public?
Yeah. Mike, do you want to make a motion to go to non-public?
Yeah, we can do that. Well, you want to go around the room first?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. Go to public first, no, nothing, okay. Lean, do you have anything for the board?
No.
I'll take the easy kind and say no.
Yeah, I met with the energy committee this week, and I told them that you may, you want to allude to something about the energy panels, and they're supposed to come up with a sentence or two that you could use for the report. And so that's, that's work in progress. The second project they're working on, I told them to delay it a little bit. If they want to create a solar panel three times the size of it behind the school. And they're working with the school, and it's going to be a gray area, I said, you, you want to start briefing the planning board, the selectmen, get everyone involved in this, so there's no hidden agenda as far as forgetting to notify anybody. But there's a potential of saving a lot of dollars, electricity dollars. If they can get the same sort of deal that we have, we may set unknown right now for this coming year, but they could save some big dollars five years from now with very little upfront cost. And so I said, that's something that can, we seriously consider, and they could use our example of the transfer station as they try to sell the program to the school board. But remember, that's external to the building. We may have a say here, and I think if we work together between the two boards, we could come up with a potential savings for the, for the town down the road.
I would also like to see how this array of panels develops and how we are doing what the funding to make a proper decision to do more. You know, we already take care of five different town buildings with this one.
Right, and the thing is, and right now, the proof is going to be, the payoff's going to come in about four years.
Right.
Where we're going to really start paying them off. Right now, we're making enough money to pay the lease and a little bit after that. But the payoff's going to be really four years from now.
The, we still have the straining costs that we pay too, so.
And I have to explain to them that the thing is, they're going to, whoever pays the cost, whether it be the school or the town, to me, is, it's a, it's a small amount of money for investment. And we, I, I said, there's going to be some site prep cost, and we have that anticipated.
If you notice your electric bills, the standard cost is going up substantially for everybody.
Okay, and just, just for the record, the planning board met with a conceptual regarding subdivision of Calci Road with a client this week. I thought it was a very well-received meeting. The town requirements I thought were clearly delineated to the application. However, work is still being done, it's going to have to be done by the applicant if it's going to be accepted. And for the record, that's where I, they've accused themselves for that meeting because he's a butter. And the applicant, I thought, presented some interesting information, and the board presented some interesting, asked some interesting questions, and I think it was synergy in the right direction to allow the person to develop his property, but he's going to meet the rules. And I'll leave that there. I did share with the, that I shared within the town, the Calci Road, I shared that the town was doing a survey to actually put some marks, get some determination of where the road ends, begins, and especially near the end, because that's a, right now, there's no granularity in the plan, isn't an opinion from them, but this is an opinion from one, one survey side. And I said, we will share that with them when we get the information from the board.
Right, but that's a biased opinion.
Correct, and so we're trying to get an independent opinion.
Right, so this will give us an independent that's coming in and has no liars in the fire.
Right.
Just wants to give you.
And I think that's going to be, that's going to be a big assist to the planning board as they go through the process of, I was saying, nay or nay to the subdivision. We'll put requirements on it.
Lean, just a note from last week's meeting, did we get any of that second binder, the binder of the court case we just went through to the?
No, I've been too busy to even think about it.
Okay.
Okay, and that's.
Let me know if you need me to go pick it up from the law office down in Manchester or something, or expedite it for you, bring it up to your office.
They were on-site this week, as I understand. And that's all I have for now.
I had nothing for the board this week, I mean, discussed everything during the meeting, so.
Then I'll make a motion to go to non-public for our say 91-Alpha, paragraph 330. That's tax paid, I'm, not library, but maintenance line.
So it's going back to.
Going back to tax paid as now.
All right, why don't we do that, Lean, and then next week we'll make a decision on that one, get our numbers.
But it looks like no more than a 20 cent increase when I sign.
I think it's going to be, our revenues come out fairly decently, good job.
And we were conservative too.
And we're even more conservative this year, so.
And hopefully the increase of 17 cents will be offset by the revenue increment.
Exactly. Actually, but the risk we have this year going forward, state revenues may be down.
Correct.
And so we're, we're being, we're being prepared for that mentally, we don't want to get, you know.
Right.
caught short, we could be.
Lean, did you want to go out through this, solving summary statement on the capital reserve?
I provided that for you because the warrants as presented, they can go up or down, they can be removed, you guys can change your mind, but the closing market, this is 7/31 statement, and the warrants that were applied to the town would be the rebound, which is, has an ending down of $54,000, will be coinciding 15 in there. The economy capital reserve has $71,000, will be coinciding 15 there. Fire department, he's spending 120, but he's also depositing 60, so the balance is 270 currently.
When you say deposit, this is last year's deposits?
This is ending December 31st, 2020, so that's what they have in the bank right now.
Okay, we get $13 worth of income?
Yeah, for all, oh, no, I think that's the month.
Even so, on 800,000?
And then we have a transfer station has $7,000, we're putting in the transfer station gives $20,000.
That's, when you say putting in, that's the new one.
That's the new one that we're proposing, so that'll increase those balances, so if you're following the capital increment plan, that's where this statement would come in handy to determine if we're on track with what we're projecting for available funding to replace the big equipment.
Right. Well, the fire department looks healthy, but he just shocked us with the price of a truck.
Yeah.
And Lush has had, he's going to have a half a million dollar truck out in a couple of years, have a.
Yeah, no, but I mean, it sounds big, but it's really, it's not.
He said, he said it'd be somewhere around maybe $200,000 for that.
Yeah, so we're just barely halfway there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've really backed down on a lot of our deposits, so it's a little threatening.
Are some of these the schools?
Yeah.
I see the special ed fund has. It's good to see them all on page, thank you. Okay, so that takes care of our.
Lean, I just want to say thank you, that was very clear, I understand how you presented it tonight.
Department budgets, revenues, all the units.
I think we've got it all. Again, I just want to remind you next week, it'll be last week, thinking that the adjustments have changed, however, we want to try to.
I, I think you're 99% there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on my town report diligently, probably putting in extra hours when I'm not getting interrupted, and I'll be hounding everyone to get their reports in, because there's a very small window for me to get those out immediately after our work hearing. Any final changes have to be some updated to the report, and then by the Monday after, I have to get that to the printer for proof.
Okay, I'm going to go to mailbox items, we've got a few things to clean up in here.
You want to, you want to, are you going to warrant?
I thought we.
Well, I think it's pretty much just.
That's all we have.
Okay, so are we going to vote on it now, or?
No, we should do, do that after the public hearing.
Right, okay.
But if you have a chance to read it, if you see anything that I missed, have a mistake, definitely, should be an email or an email on my cellphone. Again, the only one I have not updated is number four, and obviously on that, the floor should be in summary, the fireplace button is going to be number four.
Okay, going to mailbox items on the agenda. We've got a couple of things to clean up here. On the winter stipend on call, we made the one-ton truck $55 an hour. Jeff has corrected it to $57 an hour. We'd like to make a motion that the, effective November 50th, 2020, highway contractor willing maintenance on-call stipend, one-ton plow truck be adjusted for $55 to $57.
I'll second that.
Motion for me, seconded? All in favor?
This was a, it was an administrative error.
So I guess we don't have to sign that, the motion for me.
No, we have to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's for county purposes, I like to have the accuracy on that.
I'll sign my thing, just so it's. What's today's date?
21st.
1/21/21? Oh, that's scary. Okay, an update on Kimel Pond Road. I spoke.
Oh, we want to talk in non-public in that one?
I think we have to at this point.
Okay.
I spoke with Mike Kaminsky about doing the abatement for the asbestos in the building.
Mike Kaminsky.
Mike Kaminsky, I'm sorry. And it is a state and family law that it be done, no matter if it's a town building or not, we thought last week that a town building might be exempt from it. That being said, I got a list of contractors within the state that would do it, and I talked to a local firm. Our room agent, Jeff Crosby, just used for another builder down in Gostown. And I have an appointment on Monday for him to come and do the sample testing. It looks like he charges us, it's about four hours at $65 an hour to do the, to come out and do the fieldwork and do the batching up and send it out for the test. He said it typically takes about 10 tests per home, and they run $25 each. So it's a pretty minimal charge, and it will all be done above board, by the books, and he'll give us the report back within two weeks, so we can finish up on that building.
Okay.
So I got the keys back in fact for my, before I leave, when I get Grandma's done, I didn't give her the keys to that building. So I'll meet them up there Monday or Tuesday, he said he could meet with us and send them out, and in two weeks we'll have the report back. I called the insurance company, Lean, I came in this week to ask what the next step was to do, and find out what the the depreciation would be on here, and basically, the insurance agent for Primex explained, if we were rebuilding the building, the difference in money that they offer us versus the $126,000 is if you rebuilt it new right now and showed them the invoices, it costs more than what they're willing to pay out as cash value now, because it's increased. She would pay out those depreciation, the depreciation. That's replacement value. But since we're not going to do that demolition, we're only funded back what the actual cash value was in the building. Which we looked at it last time, and it was.
In the 90s.
Yeah, our total check will be coming, it's $93,900, $396.68. So $93,396.68. And that includes $5,500 for the removal of the tree and debris in that check. She's actually cutting that check later, she got it the next day or two.
Would that be considered an anticipated revenue?
That will be for this year.
On the whole check, on the whole check.
So, so that check will come in, and then we will use funds out of that, I guess, to, to the demolition and whatnot. So it's not going to be on that for the, for the town. I did talk with her about the asbestos testing, and she said if any part of the asbestos testing that was from the tree damage, she would pay for that above and beyond. So in other words, where the shingles got damaged, if the shingles have asbestos in them, they would pay those bills. If you go to an undamaged part of the building, they don't pay for that. So as the guy does his testing, I'll make him keep notes on where he is in the building. And if we find any in that area, which I don't think we will, I look like standard Ashwell shingles to me, we'll resubmit them, and she said she'd pay for. So you guys felt good with that?
I'm good, consensus is yes.
Okay. Jeff has called about shutting off the electricity, apparently the previous tenant didn't call like he said he'd do. I asked Jeff to get in touch with Lean, and they said that they would transfer it to the town's name.
I did that, too.
And so we'll have it shut off.
The process was to transfer the utility to the name of the town, there may be some cost for that, but then they'll have an immediate shut-off authorized. And they, after talking to the one girl who transferred me to another individual, she had a better idea of, this is a condemned building that's been damaged, that could potentially be a fire hazard, it's electricity, sparks, whatever. And so she looked at it a little bit more aggressively and said that they would take care of it. Because it seemed like they were giving us a runaround a little bit, but we're all set now, tomorrow, don't contact me, let me know when that power's been shut off.
They just have to be careful of not, not overstepping the renters' rights. And that, that's normal. Yeah. Well, we're going to have to pay for the demo. We're going to have to pay for the demo if they want.
Maybe we should cut the war during the.
And we did check, I checked the post just yesterday, the post is there, the ring's on.
Okay.
So just keeping an eye on it as I go through.
Good.
Okay, so that's it on that, I see update there, and I did call the building department, tell them like they are meeting up there, so he's aware that we are going to do the proper testing, and he's on board with that, I guess. Okay, Lean has posted the public hearing for the war. The public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 4th, 2021, beginning at 7:05 PM, right here at the Dunbar Town offices. And we will be getting help from the building department, and Donna will be in here for the Zoom meeting for that section of it. So that's part of.
Probably put it down on the, on the website, I did meet the deadline, if that is.
This is a notice from Mike Cummins that we all read earlier in the weekend last week, in reference to the asbestos staple of falling guideline. One thing I was going to ask Jeff while I was here, I wanted to ask him about this Winslow Town Forest as well as the as well as the other town pit that I'm going to have questions about. If you could maybe talk with Jeff this week and have him let us know for next week, so we'd like to get back to this Society of Protection, the Andrew Porch. I'd like to get back to this, uh, Society of Protection, the Antiraport. This is a second letter.
I could send the, all of Town Forest an email, but he doesn't go to his email that often, so.
And, uh, it's, it's in reference to shipping executory interest of the Winslow Corporation. Winslow Town Forest, 130 acres. And, uh, so we'll wait to hear back from the Town Forest on that.
Yeah, but I did scan that to the Town Forest as well, because they're the ones that would need.
Yeah, Jeff's in chair now, so.
When do they meet next time, if you're asking?
March, maybe, I think.
Okay, okay.
You might want to ask Jeff if they're gonna meet, um, to make some decisions before then.
Boy, you know, if they can meet, maybe we could send an interim response to the gentleman saying, not blowing off, but it's a, in work, work progress. An upcoming meeting is, Lena, with this, so just we send the list, the new response back to the gentleman saying, uh, we, the committee's gonna meet, they're gonna discuss it, in the anticipated early March. If that's acceptable to you, let us know, and, uh, because it's a committee of volunteers.
Right.
It's something we really don't control, it is a separate committee.
Okay, Mary Gerald, um, her dad passed away, and, uh, so we have assigned here a card to sign. Sympathy card.
The board has a policy to, um, send out flowers or donation to their interest partners or dollars not to qualify for the donation in this case.
Yeah, I think we should. Boards in consensus to that? Uh, we have another one here, George Holmes' dad passed away, and as you guys know, George is on several, uh, several boards in the town, Conservancy Commission, Planning Board, longtime member, so I'd like to send him a sympathy card as well.
And just for the record, I feel bad for George, every time, everywhere he goes, he gets exposed to a personal COVID. He doesn't have, um, poor George. I think it was his second time he's been in someone in the office or something like that. Did he either did?
Yeah, he did.
But he's doing the right thing by quarantining himself.
Okay. We have a cover sheet of the Dunbar Town Report. I really like this one with the town hall in it, it looks really nice. Um, and the bandstand in there all lit up with the trees. I'd ask Lena to maybe take this one here, which shows the cremation gardens, and make that a smaller block down here in all the corners, and try that for one of the covers for us. Or we could wait a week or so and decide that, if you want to do that last picture. You want to take a look at it, Mike?
I thought the Christmas, the library was great.
Yeah, it really did, and I, I didn't notice it first, but this one here shows a separation between the three pictures. And this one, they're all touching, but I do like the separation.
Yeah, the cemetery, I just don't think adds anything to it, I think it takes away.
Yeah, I mean, whenever you guys decide, okay, it would be an option.
Yep. Next week is gonna be plenty of time for you.
Wait until you look those?
Yeah, no, I saw them. Thank you.
I'm not sure Dawn's planning on putting anything in his, with his cemetery report, I can ask her, but.
If he's got room for a picture, you can do that picture that page. Okay.
So choose one of those and go with it?
Yeah. The library picture, it looks very nice.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, we have here a package for reading on the select board about the Merrimack County budget for the year 2021. And, uh, Merrimack County budget and proposed budget of $95,797,898. So that's for reading from the select board, it's all in the leisure. Uh, we have another letter here from Jamie Johnson from Gostown, looks like a Jehovah Witness, he's asking us.
Hey, I was wondering, just on the county budget?
Yeah.
Are they, uh, is that not significantly, or is it they trying to do the same thing that we're all, we're all small?
That's actually only reading that was at the bottom, but that's, that's for this calendar year, right, 2021?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it did go up, so.
Hopefully not a lot, because I, because I, look at, all these towns are hurting, the, the county shouldn't be, basically.
Their increase is only 2.95%.
All right, that's not too bad.
And they have a reduction in property tax of $350,000, so with that reduction, it's not much of an increase.
And that was my concern, I hate to say.
And they utilize $6,450,000 of prior year fund balance to keep that budget lower. They're doing the same thing we're doing.
I'm glad to see they're doing that.
I was looking here, there's an old letter in here, in reference to Winslow Town Forest, that we just spoke about together, but. Again, this is a COVID-ish stuff we spoke about last week. Last week and last week. Now I have another item. Oh, we've got a lot of checks in here. We had a letter last week from Alfonso Alfano Law Office, in reference to the public right of way of the old discontinued and non-discontinued section of Old Route 13. I've read through this, um, information about the Old Route 13, and I've looked at the town documents that were provided to us from there, and, um, you know, in reading this, it does look like that section of Old Route 13, um, was not discontinued, and is a town road, current town road. And it looks like this stuff is being placed in the way of that right of way. And, uh, even if it was discontinued, the landowners beyond that have right to use that section of road to access their land. So it shouldn't be blocked whether it was discontinued or, um, or a town road.
Right, but they, they highlighted that in that, uh, the town meeting, that that piece of road along with, I think, two other lots, two other lots.
Yeah.
Areas, uh, were gonna remain the town. And the other discontinued parts of the road, they said the owners would own to the center of the road.
Yeah.
So, you know, unless something changed, that road down the road, and I don't know what Jeff has for information, you know.
Yeah, he's gonna provide.
But whatever he provides us would, would shed enough light on that, so that maybe we want to discuss that when we see what Jeff has.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do, and also we have a letter from Pat Vanciaco, which is gonna be the attorney for the opposite, uh, landowner for the Mitch Bernard property. And, uh, she's asking us to let her know of our proceedings, so she can be present. What I'd like to do, Lena, is send her a letter that we're in receipt, and she also was copied on this letter from Alphano Law Office. And if she has any information she'd like us to consider on our findings, then we'd like her to provide that to us for our next select board meeting, so we can review it.
Right.
And then we'll try and make a decision. Now, just to go a little bit further, one board of selection did make an issue, it's in 2002, this issue came up back then, that, that was a town road to that point, and they thought that there should be no destruction in that roadway. So this is the second time in so many years.
Yes, that's what Jeff said, until we see some documentation, we'll be very hopeful, you know.
That's my, I'm quick for it.
So I think along with Jeff's, if we can get anything that Pat has, if she wants us to consider, um, then we'll.
Is that something that, a letter from the other attorney, is that something that she should get a copy of?
She's already been CC'd on the. Yeah, so she was, she was already made aware of it, and now she's seeing, seeing us. And she's saying she wants to be present, we don't mind having her come to next week's meeting, but we'd like to have her information to read before she comes.
Right, it'd be nice to, uh, not, to read and paint you from her.
Right.
Think she sees things, so we can be fair as we make any judgments.
Because sometimes these things happen where somebody, because the road ends, they see that they start using a land, and it becomes their property, you know, and maybe that's the situation here.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's not happening in just one spot, uh. So. You know, and there's, there's, there's these situations all over town, you know, we have Everett Road over where Mike lives, we've got County Road here, we've got Guinea Road, it's all kinds of roads in towns with the same situation that. We can't let people start encroaching on the town's rights for these roads, we've got, you know, the board of select, whatever, company body, who knows. Lena, I think, uh, that's it on our, that's it on our schedule, so.
I assume you have that one request, the non-public?
Yeah. Mike, do you want to make a motion to go to non-public?
Yeah, we can do that. Why, you want to go around the room first?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. Go to public first, you know, nothing, okay. Lena, do you have anything from board?
No.
Well?
I'll take it easy, can you say no?
Yeah, I met with the Energy Committee this week, and I told them that you may, you want to allude to something about the energy panels, and they're supposed to come up with a sentence or two that you could use for the report, and so that's, that's work in progress. The second project they're working on, I told them to delay it a little bit. Um, if they want to create a solar panel three times the size of it behind the school, and they're working with the school, it's gonna be a gray area, I said, you, you want to start briefing the planning board, the selectmen, get everyone involved in this, so there's no hidden agenda, as far as, uh, forgetting to notify anybody. But there's a potential of saving a lot of dollars, electricity dollars. If they can get the same sort of deal that we have, we may say unknown right now for this coming year, but they could save some big dollars five years from now, with very little upfront cost. And so I said, that's something that can, we seriously consider, and they could use our example of the transfer station as they try to sell the program to the school board. But remember, that's external to the building. We may have, uh, a say here, but I think if we work together between the two boards, we could come up with a potential savings for the, for the town down the road.
I would also like to see how this array of panels develops, and how we are doing with the funding to make a proper decision to do more. You know, we already take care of five different town buildings with this one.
Right, and the thing is, and right now, the proof is gonna be, we're, the payout's gonna come in about four years.
Right.
Where we're gonna really start paying them off. Right now, we're making enough money to pay the lease, and a little bit after that. But the payout's gonna be really four years from now.
The, uh, we still have the, uh, straining costs that we pay too, so.
And I can have an explanation on that, the thing is, they're gonna, whoever pays the cost, whether it be the school or the town, to me, is, uh, it's a, it's a small amount of money for investment, and we, I, I said, there's gonna be some site prep cost, and we have depth in this.
If you notice your electric bills, the standard cost is going up substantially for everybody.
Okay, and just, uh, just, uh, for the record, the planning board met with a conceptual, uh, regarding the subdivision of Calci Road with a client this week. I thought it was a very well-received, um, meeting. The town requirements I thought were clearly delineated to the, uh, application. However, uh, work is still being done, it's gonna have to be done by the applicant if it's gonna be accepted. And, uh, for the record, that's where I, Dave, um, accused himself for, for that meeting, because he's an imputer. And, uh, the applicant, I thought, presented some interesting information, and the board presented some interesting, asked some interesting questions, and I think it was synergy in, in the right direction to allow the person to develop his property, but he's gonna meet the rules. And I'll leave that there. I did share with the Bob, uh, that I shared within the town, Calci Road, I shared that the town was doing a survey to actually put some marks, get some determination of where the road ends, begins, and especially at the end. Because that's a, right now, there's no granularity in the plan, there's an opinion from them, but there's an opinion from one, one survey side. And I said, we will share that with them when we get the information from the board.
Right, and that's a biased opinion.
Correct, and so we're trying to get an independent opinion.
Right, so that's gonna give us an independent that's coming in, and has no lines to, in the fire.
Right.
Just wants to give it.
And I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big assist to the planning board as they go through the process of, I was saying, nay or nay to the, uh, stuff. We'll put requirements on it.
Lena, just a, a note from last week's meeting, did we get any of that second binder, the binder of the court case we just went through?
No, I've been too busy, we didn't think about it.
Okay, and that's.
Let me know if you need me to go pick it up from the law office down in Manchester or something, they're expedited for you, bring it up to your office.
They were on site this week, as I understand. And that's all I have for now.
I had nothing for the board this week, I've discussed everything during the meeting, so.
Then I'll make a motion to go to non-public for RSA 91-Alpha, paragraph 3.